Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Wednesday, December 27, 2023. I would like to call to order the City of Columbus City Council meeting for tonight. Our first order business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight?
So this is Janet. I'm trying this out. Can you hear me okay? Does this work for you? Okay. I move to approve consent agendas number three through five.
This is Sue. I'll second.
I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye. Is there anyone in the audience or online who would like to speak at the public open Hearing none, we'll move on. Planning Commission report. I was liaison last Wednesday on December 20. We began at 6:00 PM. In attendance were Robin Wood, Barb Babic, Chair Lynn Carver-Quinn, and Judy Huntush. We had a public hearing for ARPA with Elizabeth Geiger?
Giegler.
Giegler regarding a text amendment and a PUD conditional use permit that would allow her to proceed with her project over on Feller Street. There was quite a bit of discussion. Eventually Barb Babic moved to approve the text amendment and the PUD conditional use permit, and it was voted unanimously to send it to the council for approval. That was the only business of the evening, and the meeting adjourned at 6:22. So would you guys like to come up to the table, please? Pull your mics up, and we can discuss a little bit. If anyone has questions or... I think most of us were at the meeting. Or Ron, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a few questions. I was at both meetings. Elizabeth, I want to start from the beginning, kind of, because you probably answered this question at the concept hearing or whatever. And I think it's a great idea, and it looks like zoning and everything is in pack, but I can't remember... RPAW, are there other rescue centers or organizations in the state of Minnesota that are going to use this spot that you got, this wellness?
So for the purposes of veterinary care, originally it will be just for rescued pets or wonderful animals, but then we'll open it up to have services for other rescue organizations because they're currently using just regular veterinary clinics. And the scheduling for it is, it's too far out. So we will be allowing the other rescues to use it. And then finally, Phase Three, we will want to offer certain times for low-cost options for the public.
Okay, and I think I asked this question, too, at the concept hearing about animals coming in from out of state.
There shouldn't be anybody coming in from out of state unless they come into another rescue, but they have to have health certificates through the state of Minnesota before they're even allowed to cross state lines. So our rescue in particular doesn't pull from out of state. There's some rare occasions. I think maybe we took two or three dogs from out of state this last year, and all of them have to have an approved health certificate to cross state lines, plus they all have to have rabies certificates.
And I'm looking at the whole volume of it. That's what I'm looking at. So you're the only wellness center for rescue animals in metro area?
Well, other rescues do have their own wellness centers. So Secondhand Hounds has one in Minnetonka, and then Happy Tales has one in Fridley. I think Angel of Hope has one in Dayton. There are a handful of others that have their own facilities scattered throughout. Now, whether they allow other rescues to use their services, I know Secondhand Hounds does in Minnetonka. There also is another nonprofit veterinary clinic that's in Eden Prairie, I think. And so they're open to the public and to rescues. So we wouldn't be the only one, and as far as traffic goes, it's not going to be like we're having loads of these people because we have to have the staff for that. Currently, we're not going to have the staff to be able to have hundreds of people coming through every week.
Okay. Well, I remember in the narrative you talked about statewide, you know, low cost, the cost for veterinary care to help out people once you get rolling.
Right. So that would be the biggest thing that I can see in this community in particular will be like the community feral cat colonies. There's a huge, I mean, you can call it a problem of overpopulation, and so people that have these cats on their property may not have even ever wanted them there in the first place, but they can't control it because they're not going to spend $300 on each one to get them altered. So for us to be able to provide that service to the community is going to help with the overpopulation as it is. I'm not saying that all of these rescues in the state are going to be able to come in and do all their services with us. It's not meant to be a large-scale thing. It's supposed to just be able to help us in the beginning, you know, because right now we have to wait a month or two for every animal that comes in for their appointment. So it was supposed to curb that. But if we can help serve the community in other ways, then we absolutely want to help.
So a veterinary clinic up in Canobic County or something like that couldn't tell someone, well, go down to Forest Lake, or, I mean, Columbus, and see your services, could they?
Generally, I mean, they can't. There's no reason why they can't. We're not just going to service Columbus residents, but those are obviously going to come first. And there only is going to be, I would say, one or two days a week that we would even be able to have those unless we were doing some big program on a weekend, but that would be like once or twice a year. So it's not, it's going to be, the main focus was never to be a clinic for everybody. It was supposed to be for our organization, like I said. So we just want to have these overwhelmed clinics, not be overwhelmed by services of vaccinations or spay neuter, because they have clients that have sick pets that can't get in, and they've been a part of that clinic for 20-plus years. So it's just to alleviate that stress.
So you're going to have something like Chuck and Dunn's or something where, like a Thursday afternoon?
Yeah, so like originally, a lot of the fire departments used to have like spring shot clinic where they would have one day where everyone would line up and they'd pay for the shots, and then they'd be on their way. Those are similar to that. Yep.
Okay. Well, you answered my questions, then. Thank you.
Yep.
Good questions.
Anyone else?
The only question I had is, and I'm sure you've answered this, just want to make sure. When they come in, they're just coming in for medical, so they may stay overnight if they have to, but...
Yep. It would, it's just veterinary services, not a boarding facility.
Right.
Because I know that was one of the questions that the Planning Commission had, and it's in the documents that they wrote up under the conditions, how many animals can be there at a time. So there is a limit for that.
Okay. Yep. I think that, you know, the biggest concern is, I'm partially wrong, where it's, you know, the amount of activity that's taking place, but then also the amount of dogs that are outside and making noise and that kind of thing. But it doesn't sound like they will be outside for any periods of time except for just to relieve themselves.
Right. And that was one of the other questions that they had was that, I guess there was a proposed training services business that was here a year or so ago that people didn't want it because they were all going to be out with all these dogs, and it's not in comparison to that. They would just be out to relieve themselves or, you know, maybe a playtime or two or meeting a potential adopter, but they're not going to be out there, and it's not going to be 10 or 20 of them. It's going to be one or two of them.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
This is Janet. I have just a couple of questions, mostly for Elizabeth. So when we went through the CUP for Muddy Paws, there were a lot of conditions that we put in there. Was that cross-referenced? Did Ellie cross-reference some of those requirements with this?
I think that there was some distinguishing factors in here because this was not a boarding facility, and that was a boarding facility. So I don't know that there was a cross-reference necessarily to the boarding issues because they weren't apples to apples, and there wasn't any boarding here. And the city did not have to license this particular veterinary clinic because the state did, so they have to abide by all of state rules. And so because of that, we didn't have as many conditions as the Muddy Paws work plan had showed because they didn't have state guidelines, and we felt that they needed to have more stringent guidelines.
So that's true for the rescue portion as well? Because it is kind of like Muddy Paws, although their scope of business is a little different, where they have multiple different things that they're doing, and they may fall under sort of different areas of licensing. So if I'm understanding you correctly, your wellness center may be opened after or in a phased way with your rescue. So first you're at a rescue, then you'll do the wellness, then you may expand the wellness to a larger clientele. Am I understanding that correct?
Sure. So it is a little confusing because Rescued Pets Are Wonderful in and of itself is an organization, a nonprofit animal rescue.
Correct.
We now have a new nonprofit organization with its own identity, its own nonprofit tax status.
Yep.
Which is the Animal Wellness Center. That is specifically and only a veterinary facility. So there would not be any of the rescue animals that, it's not going to be like a shelter and an adoption center or anything like that. The only thing that would be there from the original organization would be storage. And so the vet services would start with our animals, make sure we can get those through, make sure we're up and running, then offer it to the public, but it would be just like any other vet clinic. So like she said, we also have to be licensed from the Board of Animal Health, and then we also have to have a kennel license through them. And then the Minnesota Veterinary Board also has to give us a license, which all three of those are, they're, we've paid the fees for them, we're just waiting for the paperwork to come back.
Okay.
And they will have their own, both entities and potentially the USDA will also have to come in for yearly walkthroughs to give us those licenses.
Right.
But as far as, I think what your concern is, is that this would be a place for our rescue to work out of, and animals would be there all the time, which would be similar to like a boarding facility, but that's not the intent of this facility.
Okay.
And Councilmember Haglund, I do have a follow-up. You know, in the process of looking at the approval here tonight as compared to the Muddy Paws approval, there are some additional conditions that speak to this in particular. Number one, it's the maximum of six dogs and 12 cats allowed on the premises for care and accessory boarding. So significant limitation there. Then we have all of the conditions related that are just the same as the Muddy Paws conditions with regards to the licensing requirements. So those have been moved over. And then also we have the general sanitary requirements that we added in light of some of our past experiences. And so there are additional conditions with regards to leashing of dogs, keeping dogs within the fenced area, cleaning up of any things that may, the animals may generate over time.
So we, our animal control person would not have to do inspections of this facility because it's under state control for all aspects of their business?
That's correct. So the state licensing, and we do have a condition that requires compliance with all state and federal licensing requirements. So that will be covered as part of the veterinary clinic license that will be issued by the state of Minnesota.
Okay. And then my other question for you is a lot of shelters also have a little retail part of their, are you planning to do any retail in your area? I didn't see that in the application, but...
Yeah, as of right now, it's not something that we would be doing.
And then this is just another question. It's more of a housekeeping thing for Megan. So in the, excuse me, in the recommend, or is it the findings of facts? I think it's the findings of facts where it says that the proposed use of the property is consistent with the 2024 comprehensive plan. So this is for the text amendment portion. Shouldn't that read that it will be consistent once the ordinance is adopted because the zoning ordinance is part of our text amendment, and until that is adopted, it's not consistent with it? So I just, I mean, again, it's a wording thing. It doesn't matter to you guys at all, but I just think she got a little bit ahead of herself on this finding, so we might want to just change that.
We can certainly make that update.
And then when is your proposed open date?
Well, we would hope that our lease would start January 1, and then we probably wouldn't open until March or April, depending on how the build-out went with construction.
I had one other question for our city attorney. So it sounds like the plan, if things go well, is that during the lease period, they would try, they would opt to purchase the property? How does that affect the property tax income once a nonprofit owns the property versus the current owners?
Well, just like it would work today, if the nonprofit owns the property, it's only the portion under which the nonprofit operates that receives the benefit. So, and oftentimes, this comes up in the case actually of city governments, right? When the city starts leasing space to an exercise facility that's operating out of an ice rink, the city has to divide that portion of the property and pay taxes on the leasable space once it hits a certain threshold. And based on how this building is divided, that would very much be part of the calculation.
So the part of the building that's the quilting part would not be purchased by you, or would you purchase the whole thing and lease back to the quilting?
Yeah. Well, depending on what theirs, their lease ends in two years. Our lease for this is five, and depending on when we purchase it, we would either, you know, lease it out to them, or if they want to stay and we don't need that part, but we would be purchasing the whole property.
And so if the entirety of the property was utilized by ARPA, then the entirety of the property would, could receive the benefit of nonprofit tax shelter? If a portion of the property is rented to a for-profit entity, that portion of the property will remain taxable?
That's a bummer for us, but, I said, that's a bummer for us, but I mean, I'm supportive of your business, that's for sure. It's just taking property that's paying property taxes off our tax roll. Once that purchase is made.
Any other questions?
No.
Anyone else have any questions? All right. Then I'll make the motion to approve Ordinance 2310 and Ordinance amending Chapter 7A of the Columbus City Code of Ordinances to include veterinary animal hospital or clinic to the HC Highway Commercial District as a conditional use as presented. Is there a second?
Ron, I'll second it.
Are there any other questions or discussions?
This is Janet. I do have a question. Do you have to add rescue to that ordinance since that's part of the business, it's not I think it's a generic amendment and the fact that they have, that it's a rescue veterinary clinic. I don't think we were that specific on the text amendment.
In a sidebar here with the city administrator, the text amendment as drafted is specific for, with regards to a rescue veterinary animal hospital or clinic and would permit the broader use that they have requested.
So I guess my clarification for questioning, for questions, it says veterinary animal hospital or clinic. It doesn't necessarily say rescue, so it's a more generic, you didn't mean, term to cover others, that if it's a non-rescue or a for-profit veterinary clinic, should they go into the same district, you would use the same use. So it's more of a generic use. However, I think if you want to make it, you didn't mean, a little tighter in language, I don't, I don't think it's, it would harm the, it would just, that's how it would, that's how it would read, and then it would just only be nonprofits that could be a veterinary clinic in that district.
I think my question is whether or not you have to add the rescue because they're an independent business. They're two separate businesses. So when you say that the ordinance is allowing the veterinary hospital, that's only one half of the business that's going to be operating there. So I think you also want to add the rescue because they're two separate legal entities.
But aren't, are they not both clinics?
No.
Or one is a rescue, what's the, a rescue is a term for, what's another term for the rescue?
So the two that she's talking about is the wellness center, which is its own business, that's the veterinary clinic, and then the rescue organization itself, but they're not going to be leasing. They would have storage, but they're, they wouldn't have any animals there. I don't know if that matters, but the lease would be under the wellness center.
I think what I, yeah, but your place of business for ARPA is going to be that address, correct?
No, our bad address will still be where it is right now. Like currently, it's my home address. That's all of our legal address. We have a PO box. This would literally be if I was going to be leasing for storage, like a storage unit. So the garage area of the spot, that's not the 3,000 square foot we're asking for this, would just be where we would keep our supplies.
And so no animal, exchange of animals or, what is the word I'm looking for? This is terrible.
Adoption.
Adoption. Thank you.
It wouldn't be an open-air adoption facility, no. This is strictly for the vet clinic.
Okay. Okay, then I get it. I was thinking that you were operating the business aspect.
Nope. Our organization is foster-based, so we're always going to be mobile. We're not, we don't have a physical brick or mortar building, and we don't plan to.
Okay.
I have one other question for the attorney. The way this was drafted, we have uses A to Z, and we are now starting on 27 and 28. So already in the zoning code, there is a double A. Is it really supposed to be AB or is it BB? Because we do have sections A and little B, and I know this is somewhat, you know what I mean, but it does matter once we record this on how it's in the code. And so I'm just curious, is it double A, double B, and then all the way to Z? Is that how it's supposed to be?
So the court, the code format should follow what was recently adopted for the CI District and the CI Light District. And off of the, the sort of top of my head, I believe it goes AA, BB, CC. And so I would request that the motion be amended to ensure that the text amendment as drafted incorporates the correct formatting for reference numbers within the city code. And I will double-check that to make sure that it is the, it is the correct numbering
So do I have to change my motion?
Mr. Mayor, if you would amend your motion to reflect the additional statement of the city attorney, that would be great.
All right. So I would like to, at this point, then we need a new second, correct?
Correct.
All right. I would like to amend my motion to include the statement by our city attorney. Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
All right. Any more questions or discussion? Anyone? All right, I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye. And now I'll make the motion to approve Rescued Pets Are Wonderful, ARPA, conditional use permit at 15161 Feller Street Northeast. Subject to conditions 1 through 23 listed in the planner's report dated 12/21/2023. Is there a second?
This is Ron. I'll second it.
No. Any discussion or questions? Anyone?
Is it a CUP-PUD?
It's an amendment to the PUD for the property with a CUP to ARPA.
Okay.
So the motion that's before you this evening is to approve the amendment to the PUD for the subject property with a CUP granted to the subject property as applied for by ARPA.
Does he have to amend it to say that?
Mr. Mayor, may you, will you please amend your motion to reflect the second statement of the city attorney?
At this time, I would like to amend my motion to reflect the second statement by our city attorney. Is there a second?
This is Janet. A second. Excuse me.
All right. Any other questions? Was that a second? I couldn't hear you.
Yes, it's a second. Sorry, I need to speak up.
Any other questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye. There we have it.
Okay, congratulations.
Welcome to the community. Good luck. And we'll move on to the engineer report, but we have no engineer. So I assume there's no...
No engineer.
No report from him. Attorney report.
Attorney report.
Madam attorney.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. So the first item that we have on your agenda tonight is a motion to approve Amendment to Chapter 4, which regulates minors on alcohol premises. So as you may recall, last year, we made an amendment to our licensing ordinance with regards to the sale of alcohol and tobacco. And the amendment that's before you this evening clarifies a matter that was raised within a review of an existing license. And it prohibits someone who is under the age of 18 from selling alcohol, which is consistent with Minnesota law, but it allows a person who is under the age of 18 to be on the same premises as, you know, as a place that sells alcohol. And when we removed, when we revised the language, we took out the prohibition on a minor selling alcohol, and we're putting that back in. So we, we cut too many things in our initial revision for the licensing process. And the scenario where this often comes up is where you might have a store clerk who is selling, who sells 3-2 beer out of a gas station. They would not be able to process the sale, but they certainly could work at the gas station, and that's what this now allows for.
Everybody understand what we did and what? Anybody like to make the motion?
What's the ordinance number?
This will be 2311.
11, okay. So I moved, I move to approve Ordinance 2311 amending Chapter 4 regulating minors on premises as presented.
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
Our second item this evening is with regards to a revised development agreement and development extensions for the Herschinko apartment project. And as the council is aware, financing for apartment projects, financing for large projects has become extraordinarily difficult over the last 16 months. And in light of that, the council has granted numerous extensions for the purchase of the subject property. What we have in front of you tonight is a revised development agreement that allows for the assignment of the development rights of the property. It requires an additional escrow payment of $20,000 to the city to be put towards the purchase price of the property at the time of closing. And lastly, it also provides for a right for the city to repurchase the property if the building is not constructed within the next two years. Lastly, it also allows for an extension of your development approvals. Your code requires that development move forward, you know, be constructed or building permit submitted within a date certain of the approval. This extends out that date of the entitlements so that it runs consistently with the development agreement and the purchase agreement for the property.
and the purchase agreement for the property. And ultimately, you know, the city sold a, a great piece of property to a company that builds and, and sells groceries, and that project has not come forward. And in light of that experience, that's why we have the right to repurchase here. So if the apartment project cannot move forward, for whatever reasons those may be, the city has the right to repurchase that property and continue, and can market it for other uses and continue to grow.
Any questions, anyone?
I have a question. So, in other words, the developer doesn't have to bring those plans back in and start over again?
That's correct. So the plans, as approved, could move forward consistent with this agreement?
Within the next two years?
Correct.
That's why we're kind of hurrying this up before, before that expires?
Before the plans expire, and also because your purchase agreement is coming due as well.
Okay, you answered my question. Thank you.
So this is Janet, I do have a question. I might be remembering this incorrectly, but this one is with David Hershenko. I thought that the development agreement was being transferred to the new finance show backers. Is that not correct?
So the development agreement is assignable to the new finance backers. But the development rights, they are still working out their agreement. And so the development rights for the property will be retained by Hershenko until he essentially sells the project fully to the finance team.
Okay, thank you.
One other clarification I just want to make is, in this particular case, they do want to move forward, so with this development agreement, their intention is to close on the property on or about April 15th. So the purchase of the property will happen in the short term. It's the development that is going to be over the longer term. And, and I did ask them, because I was just curious, like, how long does it take to build an apartment building type of thing? Because I was trying to figure out whether it was going to be built in 2024. And in this particular case, it really looks like they'll purchase the land in 2024, and they are really more looking at building in 2025. So I think that's going to be more of the, the timeframe. And they do fully understand that if they change any of the development agreement or conditions, they give up the rights to build it as it was presented. That means they have to come in and we start all over again. And then there'll be new conditions and new requirements.
And this is Janet, and the other part of that is then they would be under the new rules for the Parkland dedication, correct?
Correct, and they, and they have been informed of that.
Anything else, anyone? All right. I'll make the motion to approve the Hershenko revised development agreement and development extensions for apartment project as presented, allowing non-substantive, substantive changes by city staff. Is there a second?
Yeah, Ron, I'll second it.
Are there any questions or comments? No. I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
Good, okay, good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to our next item. Before you also this evening is a First Amendment to the Development Agreement for the Waldo edition. And this amendment to the Development Agreement is in response to the city council's approval on December 8th of the revised preliminary and final plat of the Waldo second edition, which made minor lot adjustments, but did not change the number of lots or the public improvements within the subdivision. And so this is a, really a cleanup amendment to ensure that our conditions and the requirements of the revised approval are consistent in the development agreement that will be recorded against the property.
So my only question was, did we, we didn't have a development agreement originally when the, the first plat was approved two years ago. Was, was there a development agreement then?
Yes, the, there was a development agreement. And when we, when we put development agreements in place, that's why we call a First Amendment, because the first one sits in place, this sits on top and then adds and incorporates any conditions, but it also adds conditions. And in this particular case, when I reviewed it with the city engineer and attorney, there are still things with the road that need to be completed. And I wanted to make sure that the First Amendment reflected that there are still things that need to happen for improvements to the road, which will also reinstate the letter of credit. So this just brings everything forward, and all the conditions that are in the second edition are now incorporated together with the original development agreement.
Okay, thank you.
And you'll notice that with this motion, we are also requesting the opportunity to allow non-substantive changes by city staff that will allow for the incorporation of the additional information from the engineer with regards to the letter of credit. Clarification of when the development, the original development agreement was signed and recorded, and any cleanup that's needed on this front page.
Any other questions? Then I'll make the motion to approve the Waldo First Amendment to the Development Agreement as presented, allowing non-substantive changes by the city staff. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Ron.
Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Jessie, aye. Anything else, council?
Oh, one more agenda item for me. So, it's just really, it's a lot of me tonight.
You're the star tonight.
So, Mayor and members of council, the Personnel Committee has met regularly over the course of the last several months with regards to the city administrator position. And as you will recall, the city issued an RFP for search firms to do the local and potentially national search for a candidate to fill city administrator Mersko's role. The city council, at its most recent meeting, discussed this matter upon receipt of three responses to its RFP, and provided the Personnel Committee with the authority to enter into a contract to provide, for search services, so long as the amount of that contract did not exceed $21,000. In response to our RFP request, again, we received three proposals. Those proposals included what we determined was a non-responsive proposal, and then two proposals that exceeded the $21,000 marker. The, the price points you have, you have that information in front of you. The GOV HR proposal did not include a two-year guarantee, as requested by the council. The DDA proposal does include a two-year guarantee. It is a $22,000 proposal. We are here before you this evening to be able to discuss the benefits and the risks of not utilizing a search firm, and to discuss what the options may be should a search firm not be utilized. The secondary option, because your Personnel Committee is in fact a volunteer committee, rather than paid staff members, except for your Assistant City Attorney, who's currently sitting in that role, is to utilize Ellen Heinrich's consulting services to assist with the hiring of a city administrator. Now Ellen has conducted extensive interviews with your staff, with members of the community, with your advisory boards, and has been intimately engaged with the Personnel Committee with regards to drafting job descriptions, to understanding what the role of the city administrator in the future will be, and what supports will be needed by the city administrator to effectively function in the role. We estimate that because of that extensive work she has already done with the city, and based on her general hourly rate of $150 an hour, that the approximately 100 hours worth of work that Ellen would need to contribute to assisting the Personnel Committee with the process would be valued at about $15,000. Utilizing a search firm with the DDA example that is before you this evening has benefits in that it takes the entirety of the process out of the hands of the council, out of the hands of the Personnel Committee, professionalizes the process, and brings it out into the community. They'll post those positions to, you know, all of the usual places. They will engage with all of the applicants, they will handle all of the background searches, they will perform a social and emotional testing, and they will shepherd you all through the hiring process. Similarly, Ellen will engage in a very, in a, in a mirrored way. You know, staff is certainly able to post the job description that she has already drafted to the relevant websites and hiring locations for city administrators, can do outreach in those regards to potential candidates that, that staff is familiar with, that the council is familiar with. And then the Personnel Committee can assist Ellen in calling through those applications. What Ellen's services cannot provide are the background checks. And those background checks can be processed through utilizing your sheriff's office contract. I, I, there are pluses, and I won't even say minuses. There are benefits to each one of these proposals. And the third way, which I think the Personnel Committee would agree with me in not recommending, is that the Personnel Committee handles the entirety of the process on its own. And at the end of the day, assuming that there will be between 10 and 15 applications, there will be first and second round interviews. I think that's too heavy a weight to put on to two council members who are already meeting on a regular basis to help with the organizational development work that Ellen is already doing. And so for that reason, we are bringing to you tonight these two proposals. So on the first side is a $22,000 comprehensive proposal by DDA. On the second hand is a revised proposal estimating that Ellen's cost would be about $15,000 for her to continue working with the city and assisting the city with the, the application process and the vetting process with regards to the social and emotional testing, and, and giving advice to the council as well, based upon the interviews she's done about the fit of the candidate for the role.
I have a question. So we paid Ellen so much already. This is totally different. This is 15,000 more added on to what we paid for the.
For the organizational restructuring, yes, absolutely. Now, as part of that, you've received the HR consultancy services. You've received, you'll receive a report from Ellen at the January workshop about her findings with regards to your organizational structure, and lots of engagement in terms of determining, you know, as Columbus grows and its needs grow, what sort of a new, I'd say, decision tree looks like at the city. But yes, this is an additional amount.
What did we pay her the first time?
14,000.
So it's going to end up to be about 29,000.
Well, it's a, it's a not-to-exceed value, so we actually haven't sat down, I mean, unless you guys did, we haven't sat down with Ellen to say, what's the timeframe that you're able to put to this? We need to do that. But I think this is getting your approval that we would, however we end up slicing and dicing it, it wouldn't be more than 15,000.
That's, that's absolutely correct. So we have not, so I have, Ellen has not submitted a proposal for this. We are making assumptions so that we can bring this to you tonight, because ultimately, the goal is to get the process moving forward. If, if staff is going to assist the Personnel Committee in posting the job description, which is already drafted, then we want to get that out there within the first, within the next, you know, 10 days. And so we're really seeking guidance from the council as a whole about what the, the next right step is to move forward, to move it all to DDA, to sort of keep it within the Ellen and Personnel Committee work.
So just to clarify, the, so the not-to-exceed number was 21,000, and we're asking for 1,000 more for going with the DDA, which is the professional organization, which I'm still in favor of, for the reasons that I talked about before, just their process and their, their organization. They have done the most searches in Minnesota of any other company. And I just think that the, the price for 1,000 more, I think it's worth going with that, having them cover, you know, the entire process. And I did call one of the references, well, I called a couple of the references today, and I did get a response back from one, and they had really good things to say about the company. They said, you know, they know of a lot of people that have used them, and they're really in favor of that company. Of course, they would only give the references that are, you know, positive references, but they do.
And something that I failed to mention is that Ellen's work, we would not, I would make the assumption that her work would not come with a guarantee. The DDA contract does come with a two-year guarantee, which requires them to do a secondary search if, for some reason, the candidate that, that they bring forward and that you select does not prove to be a lasting fit for the city.
Yeah, and that is a big thing, and I know that was one thing that we talked about last time. And I think I brought up one of the cities north of here that did not use a search firm, and they've gone through the process a couple of times and have found out they may be going through it for the third time, on their own, without a search firm. So it's, to me, I, it's worth the guarantee, paying that extra thousand and having a professional search firm doing that.
So now you're going to hear the counterpoint to that argument, because.
Can I make one other one?
Sure.
Because I don't know if the rest of the council knows that Ellen will be out of the country for a month. She, so we could, we could post and start that process and get some information on how, what services she could provide, but she's going to be gone for a month. So we could post it, but we may be doing part of it, and whatever she's going to do wouldn't happen until she got back.
And, and to that end, so if we utilized Ellen and she was not able to sort through the applications, because it's likely that your interim city administrator will be applying for the full-time position, the, our recommendation as a city attorney's office would be that you would have either our, you would have our office or another one of your consultants, you'd go through the metric and ensure that Mr. Davies was not engaged with part of that process, just because that's a, an appearance of impropriety, if you will. Not that there is anything along those lines underway. But those stuff, of course, then would have additional costs if you're utilizing consultants for that. So transparent, just want to be transparent about that.
Yes, and I think it was a good clarification that Sue gave, because we do know that, that Ellen will be out of, out of the country. Although she did, she has said she wants to help us with this. She has said that she'd be willing to continue on their weekly meetings. I don't know what else she's willing to do, because we haven't had that conversation. So I, I, I think there's some things she could still do and, and maybe willing to do from where she's going to be, but we need to have that conversation. So here's, here's my counterpoint to Sue's argument. I think the company is, is a very reputable company, and they certainly do have the most experience in Minnesota. The issue that I have is that the lead that they assigned us has never done a search. We've met with him a couple of ti, or we've met with him one time. We've had an email exchange with him one time. He's not answered the questions that I think are important to be answered. They've not given us any information as to how the rest of the team would support him in this very first inaugural search of his. We made it really clear that we were not interested in starting out with a national search. And they claimed that they wouldn't be able to give a guarantee without doing that national search. I don't believe it. I believe that the reason they want to do a national search is that's the way they do it. And, you know, then they end up with a pool number that looks good, even if half of them are ones that we wouldn't consider. And I think we're paying a lot of money for someone who's very inexperienced, who has not presented a compelling argument as to how he can do the job or how the company would support him. And if he can't convince us that he's the right guy, how's he going to convince somebody that we're the right city for them to come? So I, I feel pretty strongly that although I think the company has a good track record, we're getting someone who doesn't have any track. have any track record. And I don't think we should be paying top dollar for somebody who doesn't have any experience. And so it's not the way I want to do it. I would much rather have them do the whole thing, but I can't in good conscience recommend that we spend taxpayer dollars in this amount for someone who doesn't have any experience and hasn't, hasn't gained my confidence, anyway.
And just to take on to, and I understand your point, but they, their company has a process. He's not going to be doing the whole thing. I mean, they have a process. They have systems. They have everything in place that they've done for hundreds of other searches. So the inexperience is going to be in maybe the interaction with the council, but I don't think the, the actual search itself or the process is in jeopardy because of how long he's been with the company.
Well, I disagree with you because we don't know that. I mean, they have not told us what he's doing versus what anybody else is doing. So we don't know that. And the second thing is that I just, I, it's, even if he's not doing everything, what, the value that I had seen in, in hiring a search firm, besides not burdening us with all of the steps of having to do this, is that they would have connections to other people who are currently sitting in city administrator or director-level positions in, in cities because they had done searches and had, and had gotten to know those people. So they would know who would be a good fit for us. He's not done a search. I don't know who he knows. He doesn't tell us who he knows. And so we're not getting that benefit from this person. That's part of what the lead would do. That's part of what a lead would typically do. So I think that, I mean, that's my discomfort. And I, I would not vote for spending the dollars for DDA based on what they've told us or what they've committed to. I, I think we're not getting good value for the dollar.
Well, his reference did work with him, and it was a good reference.
As a city administrator, he hasn't done a search. He told us that. So he didn't, they didn't work with him as, as part of the search firm.
I got a question for Sue. You talked about this other city that went through two firms?
No, they, they did it themselves.
I think you might be wrong on that, Sue. So be careful. Because if you're talking, you're talking about Scandia, right?
No, I have not mentioned the city.
But when you've talked to us, the city you did mention is not, is not the right city. Because there's city admin-
What's the one you mentioned?
The one that I mentioned, the city administrator just resigned on the 15th of December. So how could they have already done three? She's been, she's been in place for a number of years.
Okay.
I think, I think you're getting it mixed up. I think you're mixing up two. That's, I'm just suggesting that there's-
The question I was trying to ask is, the way I heard it, Sue, is that they went through two, and then they went on their own.
No, they went on their own twice. And so they didn't have the guarantee. So they had to redo it on their own twice. It's a lot of work.
Well, I, I understand. And I, I don't want to see, in my opinion, the council working on this that much. That's, I don't think it's our job. I mean, I, I think it's our job to hire somebody, but I don't know if we want to put in the energy and stuff like that. But I look at the, the whole nest of it sometimes, and I look at, you know, you spend all this money and you search for all this stuff, and then all of a sudden, hypothetically, we hire Jack, and then we go, huh.
Well, you're right. I mean, anything can happen. It, it's not a guarantee that we're going to do better with a search firm than on our own. We, we could do, we could get the same person.
Well, I'm not, I guess what I'm saying is, is that, you're, you're right. You're never guaranteed on anything.
Right.
But I, I just look at it where, sometimes I want to backtrack and say, well, I, maybe I don't know a lot about how much education or what licenses or what tests or whatever city administrators have to go through. So I've seen, like I said, chiefs of police come to other states that have to get relicensed in our state. And there's all this going on. And you get a little, you can go there and you can research it, but I don't, so then I look at the whole picture and I say, I think if I'm right, City of Forest Lake hired Casey, who's out of Wisconsin, or whatever. And I don't know what they went through. I have no idea. But I just don't understand why we just don't open it up sometimes and see who all applies and either let Ellen do it. I don't know. Elizabeth, do you need a license or what are you?
So a, a city administrator, there, there's licenses that you can, you can get. But generally, you know, I mean, they have a higher education degree. They have, you know, some, some background, you know what I mean, in municipal government. And so they do have some credentialing, you know, behind them. But I think when you are hiring a position in a leadership role, there's some testing involved and some, some other higher-level things that you would do that you wouldn't do at a, at a lower level for, for hiring. So I think you go out to a firm because you're looking for a different, you know, a bigger pool of people, or you're looking for a regional pool. And, and I do agree with Janet. We, you know, we're a small city. A national pool probably is not going to bring in, you know, a, a large number. And, and really, that's, it's, you know, not going to bring in that, that, you know, you don't have relocation and all that other sort of stuff. So I, I understand that that's probably, that's probably a little too much for the kind of search we're doing. They indicated that they didn't want to pare it down because they have a process. So I understand that, you know, I mean, to a point. I'm, I'm not really sure why they couldn't trim it down. Because we've all seen this. There's, there's a right size for things. We're, we're not Bloomington. You know what I mean? So we, you know, there should have been a step down. And I think we articulated that very well, that, you know, we want it right-sized. You know, nationally is probably too big, but regionally, you know, maybe someone from Iowa, Wisconsin, North Dakota. I mean, you know, there, you do see people relocate. So, you know, maybe you want something, you know, bigger than the, the metro area and such. But it, it appears that that's not what they're going to do either. And GovHR was just, I believe, bought out. So they're, they're going through some organizational measures, but their firm only gave us the one-year guarantee. So the, the two-year guarantee was never on the table. To get back to your credentialing, you know, it's, that's really the only, you know, I mean, you know, it's education and kind of experience. And, and then there are some, some tests that you go through. And that's pretty standard. I was on the search team when they hired the fire chief. And even at that level, they were still doing, you know what I mean, testing and such. However, they did do it internally. But my understanding is for the city administrator, they hire a search firm.
So if you look on page 45 of our additions, that, that was the timeline and the steps that the, that the DDA was going to go through. The first four steps, we've already done with Helen. The candidate recruitment, we can post the position. We have the job description that we've all agreed on and, and, you know, start that process. Usually, you leave it posted for three weeks or, or so for, for a search like this. The screening of the applicants, I mean, normally you would have someone like Ellen doing that. We'll have to see what she's available to do. You know, that might be, might be that, that she's back in town by that time, or she's able to do it remotely, and she has no problem doing it remotely. Personality index, I mean, that's something that is a tool that she has access to some, others have access to some. So that isn't something that we would do anyways. And you can, you can hire that out to whoever. The video interviews, the way that DDA was planning to do this was that they would do the first round of interviews, then give you the videotapes, and we would end up selecting the finalists anyway. They didn't, they wouldn't do it. They were, they would give us all the, so if they did 10 interviews, you'd have to sit through 10 hours of interviews, or however long they are, and watch them, and then decide which of the three of the candidates that they interviewed, you want to take to the finalists. So we would have been doing that anyway. We typically do the first interview, or the staff usually does the first interview when we're hiring staff, and then we do a second interview. So we usually have a two-interview process when we hire staff, anyway. The background check, that we can hire the sheriff's office to do that, so that's not going to fall on us. Reference check is, you know, calling the references. And I think that that's something we can do. We could also have Ellen do that. This intellect, intellect profile, again, that's another tool, whether we decide that that's important and we have Ellen or somebody like Ellen do it, that doesn't fall on us. This finalist packet, I mean, that's just us coming back to you with a, with a report and a recommendation. It's not going to look as pretty and nice as what they would put together, but you're not used to that anyway. So it's not going to be any big deal.
But somebody's going to have to do it. Somebody's going to have to do it. And if Ellen does it, we pay her for it.
I, I get that.
I mean, I know there's all, all of these things, and maybe some of them aren't a big deal. And yes, we will be doing part of that, but...
So I'm just going to go back to what I was hoping we would get out of a search firm is someone who knew people that are currently sitting in their office and are not looking at job boards and knew Columbus well enough to say, you know what, you'd be a really good fit for them, and that's a cool job. You might want to think about applying for this. We are not going to get that with Bart. We're just not.
Well, that's what his company does.
Yes. But that's what the lead does, and that's not what he's ever done. And he didn't, I, I mean, I'm, that's what a lead typically does. That's not what I'm seeing him say he's going to do. And I don't even know how well he knows, he knows the people that are out there because he's never done a search.
I think you're making a lot of assumptions on that. That's my opinion.
And you know what? Because in the absence of information, that's what you do. And we asked them these questions, and they didn't provide the information. So the only thing we can do is make assumptions. And you're making the same assumptions just on the other side. You're making the assumption that they're all going to work together, and we're going to get a really great product, because this is what this company does. And I'm saying, we asked them how they were going to do this, and they didn't give us an answer.
Well, they did give us an answer. It just wasn't acceptable to you.
No, they didn't give us an answer. We asked them specifically, how, how does your team back up Bart, who doesn't have any experience and has never done a search? And we didn't get any specifics on that. If you did, remind me, because I don't remember hearing it.
Well, it was in the email. I have it. But specifically, they didn't say that. You're right. But they did give a response on how they would do it.
I think they said, we do a good job, or something as non-committal as that. Of course, they're going to say that.
Madam Counselor, so obviously, we have difference of opinions.
Yes. Which is why it's in front of everyone tonight.
I just went through this on Christmas with one sister on one side and one sister on the other. Yeah, we don't want any, we want to make sure Santa comes. So what do we do?
I mean, let me just say this. We have different opinions on this, but we're all aimed at the right place. We want the best for Columbus, you know? And so there's no disagreement there. I think it's just a matter of how you get there.
So first of all, when this all started, when I got the bad news from Elizabeth, I said, well, but I want that out, and let's see what we can get. And everybody said, well, that's unrealistic because it's so much work that I'm not a part of. It's you two and you two doing all this stuff. And I agree with that. 22,000 isn't nothing, but it is what it is. So what do you think? Is it possible that instead of Ellen's 15, it may be 10,000? I mean, if I had a $10,000 savings, I'd always pay attention. Or is that not anybody?
Well...
Okay, let me back up, too. So anyway, we've got, Elizabeth is here till whenever. And we've got Jack. He's here. So there's no panic on this timewise. Although we wish it had been done a month ago. I get that. But we don't, you know, nobody's got a gun to our head. It has to be finished. So that gives us time to figure out what's the best and the most right thing we think we can do. So, and it does come down, the final, the final packet comes to all of us. But you're right, there's a lot of work, but however, if, if you're not satisfied with the answers you got, I hate giving somebody 20,000 bucks and they weren't smart enough to answer the questions. He's the salesman. And if he wasn't good enough to get everybody thinking favorably, that gives me a little bit of a red flag. Or more than a little, that's a red flag. And so what do we do? Anybody got some brilliant ideas? Go back to another Personnel Committee meeting, go, whatever. I'd like to have everybody agree. And I see everybody's points of view. Help me out. Anybody? And I know it's bad timing for Ellen to be gone if she was going to be part of the team.
Well, she's not leaving for a week. Maybe we could get some answers from her and do a special meeting, at least to get information, to present something a little more firm that says what, you know, what, what would the plan be if we used Ellen? Because I wouldn't want to not use Ellen or them. I, I'm not doing it on my own, and I'm not sure how much, I know Janet said-
I agree with you, I agree with you on that. I mean, well, we can't. I mean, the optics of it are bad, first of all. And I, you know, we've, we've already put in many, many, many hours, and this would be many hours on top of it. So I'm, I'm with you on that one. It's either, it's got to be someone like Ellen, or I don't know who else is out there if, if we needed to, if she really wasn't available. But I think that's fair. I think we should engage her and get a more definite answer to what she specifically can do. We can actually work off of this list here, I think, so that we, you know, she knows exactly what we're asking. But I think that's fair.
Okay. I was going to suggest that the other thing the council may consider is that there, that the council approve a not-to-exceed number for search costs of $21,000. Because that would allow us to assign Ellen a specific task, potentially assign, in my very, very preliminary Googling, it appears that there are, in terms of personality testing, things along those lines, that the league has utilized in the past pursuant to a subscription basis. So perhaps some of that testing could be performed and coordinated, coordinated by the Personnel Committee, but performed through a league referral source. And then, so that we could break those tasks up, but that there would be more flexibility within that budget so that final packet preparation could be completed. If Ellen can't complete it because she's not in town, or interviews couldn't be completed because she wasn't available, you know, packet preparation could be completed by a paralegal at Larkin. Something along those lines to be able to do some of the actual physical labor of the work could, could potentially be helpful in sort of coming to a middle road there.
And also, on the same, same line of thought, so we're not overthrilled with the responses, or at least Janet's not, that they got from this company. But on, and another little red flag, Ellen knew we were looking for possibly having her do this or do part of it. Why hasn't she? And we had the deadlines, and we had this and that. Well, isn't she that interested either? Or?
We haven't asked her for it. That's why. I mean, you know, you have to, you have to tell her what you want her to do. And she has, in a general way, said, yeah, I want to help you. And, you know, I think, I think I can still do it. But, you know, here's this, here's this trip that I have had organized, or have had planned. And, you know, I just want to be fair. I, I might not be able to deliver all of what you want. But we've not said specifically, here are the six things we need you to do. And I think that we need to do that. And she may come back and say, no, can do, or I can do three of the six. I don't know. But then I think, you know, there's still the option of looking at other professionals that can help us with those tasks that might not be Ellen. And it might be somebody in, in Megan's firm. It might be someone from the league. It could be, you know, some other person that another city has used. I don't know. I just, you know, again, I, it's, it's, to me, it's less about the money as it is about the fact that if I'm going to spend the money, I feel very strongly that I want to be confident that we're getting, we're getting good service for that. And, and I- And I don't feel that way. And I, and so that's where I'm coming from.
I think Ellen, at least in my read of our conversations with her, I think she is hesitant to take on the entirety of the project. I think she doesn't have access to the background check software, and so I think, you know, that's one of those things that would be absolutely material to providing a guarantee. I think she also has spent time enough with all of you, that she knows how the guarantee would be a material item, and she is not in the position to be able to provide that, because a larger firm that can absorb those costs is very different than a small business. And so I think that there's a path where Ellen's involved, but at the same time, I think we need to be realistic about the amount of engagement that she can provide, based on what she's said. And, you know, it is certainly the week of the holidays, and that gives reason enough not to answer our phone calls.
Elizabeth, what do you say?
You know, this is a tough one, in order, because there's pros and cons on both sides here. There's, you know, and I, and cities have used both avenues, and so I've had discussions all day today, saying, "Where's a clear path?" And unfortunately, with this one, there's, you know, had things all aligned, you know what I mean, there was a clear, you know, path, but they didn't align, and they didn't quite fit. And so I think in this one, we're going to have to, we're going to have to look at what's the best fit. And in this case, it's, this is a hard one to go, because you can make both fit, but they're not ideal.
Well, is the thing for me to ask for another Tuesday meeting for all you guys, and pound this out somewhere?
Well, we're scheduled to meet next Tuesday with Ellen. We're scheduled to meet next Tuesday with Ellen. I mean, she's still in town, so...
And...
But I think that council had a good suggestion on not to exceed of twenty-one thousand, and let us figure out how, what pieces to put together to use that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So I've just been sitting here listening. Initially, we've talked about a two-year guarantee. This company offers a two-year guarantee. The other company did not, right? Which is, is that why the, is that why we're not going or looking at the other company?
The other company only offered a one-year guarantee, but they also offered a more customizable, like, an ability to sort of scale back, but they were reluctant to go very far down that path, because they're down, they're in the process of being acquired. So everything that they do different than their usual thing, they have to run up the, you know, the, so they're, I think that the other company might have been a better fit for what we were looking for, and we probably could have got it at a reduced price, because of, but they're not really feeling comfortable at being that flexible when they're in the process of being bought.
Well, and I'll just say that, for just the point of clarity here, the package that was provided by Gov HR that included a one-year guarantee was twenty-four thousand five hundred. The less expensive package still exceeded the not-to-exceed number, and had no guarantee. And I believe that the less expensive package was twenty-two thousand. But I can check my emails.
Okay. I was just asking, because we were going from a two-year to Ellen with no guarantee, so I would, I had, I don't know anything about the person that offered the one, so, I mean, if they were at that twenty-two thousand dollar range, is there a reason why we're not looking, other than the fact that they're potentially being acquired? So, okay, that was my question.
That's why. And, you know, the guarantee is nice, right? I mean, it's, it doesn't mean that the person that they, that you hire is going to be the perfect fit. It means that if, for some reason, they don't last two years, they'll redo a search.
Oh, absolutely.
And my concern is, if I'm not comfortable with them doing a search the first time, their guarantee doesn't offer me any value, because like, I don't want them doing it the second time either. So that's, that's the other part of it.
Sidebar over here. I think, sort of going back to the concept of a package deal, we know that Ellen works heavily with Gallagher HR, and Gallagher has an existing relationship with the League of Minnesota Cities. And, you know, a potential solution with regards to putting together a unique package, not subject to a guarantee, could be bringing Gallagher in to do the testing work, and to do the package assembly work, and have Ellen do the interviewing work. And, and again, as Elizabeth, that was our side conversation over here, but Ellen has mentioned a number of times that she has a good relationship with Gallagher, and that may be a natural partner that could be utilized. They typically wouldn't bid on an RFP process like this, because their business is more HR-specific, and company, I would say, personnel coaching and personnel development, as compared to recruiting. And so that's also the part that is missing from that particular partnership, but it might be a solution.
Who is Gallagher, Gallagher?
Gallagher. Gallagher, it's, you know, it's a consultant firm, they have a laundry list of different things that they do. They do have a partnership with the League of Minnesota Cities on several things. You know, I've worked with them on going to some of their seminars, they do a lot of HR work, especially when new laws come on. So I've worked with them before, they're throughout, you know, Minnesota and throughout the United States, that they have offices. And I know that Ellen's worked with them before, and so I was thinking, well, maybe we look at, you know, you mean, a kind of a joint package, you know, what she couldn't do, maybe they could pick up, but you're not talking less money, you're still talking about the same, probably dollar figure, but maybe it's kind of that hybrid of what you're looking for, and you'll have maybe the best of both worlds.
So you'd talk to her about this on Tuesday? Does that be a part of that meeting?
We can just contact them. I mean, they're the group that does the salary benefit survey now for the League of Minnesota Cities, so that's their, I think that's their work that they do with the league. And so, I mean, if somebody knows somebody there, or if we reach out to the league and see if they can give us a name of somebody, we just follow up with them and ask if they could provide these services.
Well, if we ended up going with her, or she takes the job, then she is in charge of, that takes so much of this away from everybody. I mean, takes the work away. So whatever, when you're done, in a month or two, she comes back with a thing like this, with the answers in it.
I think it depends on...
I want to hire somebody else, and then have everybody meeting twice a week for the next six months, besides...
You know, Jesse, we're going to do that anyway. I mean, even if you hired a search firm, you'd be checking in with them, they'd be coming back to you, you'd be reviewing things. You, you know, it's not like you just send them off, and you don't hear from them for three months, and they come back with the golden candidate. I mean, it doesn't work that way. So we are, we were going to be heavily involved regardless of who was going to do it.
But they, her or the other company, or the other, no, this company or her, they take the lead. I mean, yes, you guys are...
We'd have to make that as a...
Perfectly clear.
Perfectly clear, exactly.
For whomever.
And I'm not sure that, but I'm not sure you can do that. I think what you're going to have to do is say, "Here are the specific tasks, Ellen, that we want you to do, and you'll be responsible for those." If we end up doing something with, you know, Gallagher, "Here are the specific tasks we want you to do." The background checks are still going to be done by the Inoka County Sheriff, I'm assuming. So then that's, you know, once we know who our finalists are, we would send the information to them, and we would engage, just like we do on any background check.
Doesn't anybody who gets hired here get a background check?
They're not all the same, so we would get a more in-depth background check.
Background checks have various different areas, like Ron knows, and you have to get releases for certain things. You just can't arbitrarily, you know, do a big background check on everything, if that's not part of their job. It has to be part of their job responsibilities on why you would do a background check.
So is that the answer for tonight? Here, everybody, back to the drawing board for one more meeting.
No, I think what we're asking for is, either decide that, after you've heard everything, you still think it's the right thing to go with DDA, or not, and if it's "or not," would you be willing to authorize up to, I've heard twenty-one, I've heard twenty-two, I don't know what the right answer, the right number is, some dollar figure that Megan will give us, that we can go and try to piece this together? We'd come back to you with a plan, after having had a chance to talk more specifically with Ellen. And then we would say, "Here's what we're going to do, here's what they're going to do, here's what it's going to cost." But you would get, I mean, that would be, you'd already have authorized us to spend up to a certain dollar amount. Or you can just say, "Come back with the plan and the dollar, and then we'll do it." So you've got lots of options.
Well, what if we make no motion tonight? And come back again in two weeks? I'm asking anybody, Elizabeth or counsel? And then, by then, we'll know. Or we should know much more, so then...
I think you should just give us direction, then, to go and get the information, bring it back, and dollar figures.
Because I'd like everybody to be really satisfied with whatever choice we make. I don't want you to be mad, I don't want you to be mad, I don't want you, and if we're all in agreement, it must be right, right? Or at least we'll tell everybody it's right.
Right.
So, that's what I'm feeling. Counsel, do you agree with that?
Yeah, so I think the motion that you would be looking for is a motion to direct the Personnel Committee to prepare a proposal for the council with regards to the city administrator search.
Yeah, so I'll make that motion. Is there a second? All we have to lose is two weeks, right?
I'll second it.
Ron? Or has moved and seconded? Everybody, anybody disagree, or have a more discussion, or anything? So basically, we're just kicking the can down the road, two weeks. By then, while it's snow on the ground...
And more information, more specific information. Yep.
I'll call for the votes.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Elizabeth, you're making us a lot of work. All right, moving on. City Council. Ron? City Council report.
Oh, I, well, no, I'm sure that Elizabeth got the same memo, or same email I got, that we lost a person in an accident there, a death on twenty-three. She's from Lionel Lakes, and she was thirty-two years old. I won't mention her name, but that's that accident you were talking about. Like, in the daytime on, was it Saturday?
Two o'clock, yeah.
Yeah, it was one during my party.
Huh?
During my party. We could hear the sirens.
Oh, yeah, good.
That spot is very, people have been killed there before. I mean, we've lived there for thirty years, and have witnessed a few different, really bad accidents. And I think when they did that meeting with the county on that section of the road, the study, they said that there's, the most accidents happen between Main Street and, I think they might have said Kettle River, but I think it's farther down. So that corner, and I was driving it tonight just to see where that was, there, when you're going north on Lake Drive, right when you get about to Hundred and Forty-First, that's where it was, the road curves a little bit, and there's even a sign that gives the curve, you know, the curve arrow, saying your, the road is curving, but it's not a no-passing zone. And there's a blind spot there, just because I've probably tried to pass before, and went, "Oh, shit, I can't see, and here comes a car." And that's where it happens. So, I mean, I'm hoping that during that study, that they realize that, I mean, they do know something has to be happened, because they've identified that there's been a lot of accidents there. And personally, I've seen them happen. So it's sad that something hasn't been done already, and...
I think there was, what I'm hearing, there's other factors involved.
Probably.
Other than the road, like, maybe speed, some other things.
Or alcohol. I mean, it was a Saturday afternoon.
Yeah, well...
I haven't heard that.
Either way, she passed away on Hundred and Forty-First, and whatever, but that's the only news, and I heard that from Jessica, Lieutenant Slavic of County, so...
The only thing I have is, I did attend the meeting with the, some of the business owners in, off of Lake Drive, and they met with the county assessor, where they were talking about the, you know, the percentage of change in their property taxes. So it was a really good discussion, I did take some notes. They did, we did determine that it was, and Elizabeth, maybe you know, have heard this, but our change in the ordinance of the amount of screening, or whatever, that didn't go into effect, because all of this happened the last year. So they did say that Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Jeff Reinhardt was there, and he said that the Inoka County levy had gone up fifteen percent. However, they did get it down a little bit on their final, which will be reflected once all of the revised statements come out in March. That number will be a little bit lower. But they also, they talked about a couple of different things that they're going to take a look at, to maybe do, you know, across-the-board decrease on Lake Drive properties. They are visiting each site. They talked about a couple other things that I'm not sure are attainable or not, so I'm not going to bring them up at this point, but it was a good meeting, and Janet was there, too, so I don't know if you have any other feedback.
The one thing that they brought up, which I thought helped explain things, and again, to me, the lesson for all of us is to establish perhaps, you know, twice yearly meetings with the assessor, because they make decisions on how they're going to do things that ultimately end up impacting our taxpayers, and I think it'd be helpful for us to know that these decisions are in the works. So one of the reasons why I think they explained why residents, or not residents, businesses saw such a big increase, is a little bit similar to why we had this similar thing happen in the residents, and that is because they have this thing called obsolescence, that they build into the record for each of the businesses. So these are aspects of their business that may, it's almost like depreciation, where they may decrease the value based on something that is sort of considered obsolete, not necessarily non-functional, not that they aren't keeping up the way they should be, but it's a decision that was made at some point in time, that now, if you made the same decision, you'd do it differently. Evidently, there were a lot of corrections to the records along, especially along Lake Drive, that would lower their tax, their tax burden, and they were entered under obsolescence, but there was no notes to describe what they were. So the record-keeping for the businesses was in bad shape, just like it was for the resident, for the residential properties. And so what Inoka County did, before they did their citywide assessment for the businesses, is they wiped down all the obsolescence notes, and started everybody from the same place. And then they went out and visited the properties. Well, if they couldn't get inside the properties, a lot of that stuff happens in the building, not, they can't tell, and so they didn't reinstate them. And for some of them, that made a big difference. And so they gave the example of a business that had a water, has a water tank for fire suppression, and it takes up one of his bays. And so that's a really good example of a development that's obsolete. He has to have it, he'd probably do it a little bit differently now, there might be other options, you know, obviously limited, since there's no city water there. But because he didn't get to go, because the assessor wasn't able to go inside of the building, he didn't know that until this meeting. So it was really helpful to be there to understand why, you know, why this happened, and it was a multitude of things, and... and it was a multitude of things, and, and Sue was right, it had nothing to do with the change that we made in our moratorium or our ordinance. But one of the things that they did talk about was that, going forward, Anoka County is going to be looking at the value of land that's gonna be used for outdoor storage, and potentially value it differently. So, now there's just a, you know, there's a, there's a dollar value based on resale that, that they use, and what they're hearing from brokers is that the value of land that's used for outdoor storage is quickly increasing. And so, as they look at the value, the market value of, of businesses going forward, the question they're asking is, how do, how do we, how do we value that? And so, for, for us, as we talk about, well, gosh, that's not the best and highest use of, of land, if we, you know, have a little tiny building that doesn't bring in very much property taxes, and then a whole bunch of land that has a bunch of stuff sitting on it, that might change, depending on how they handle this. And that's a good reason for why we wanna keep the lines of communication open with them, and, and make sure we're kind of in the know when they're thinking about doing those kinds of changes.
So, overall, I think it was a really good thing that Alex, you know what I mean, volunteered to meet with the business owners, because I think on its face, when they saw that their classification was changed from commercial to industrial, the first thing they thought was, oh, there was a zoning change, it must be that, and it must be the use, because that was very visible on their tax statement, because they all knew that they were commercial before, and they had been for 10 years, and then all of a sudden, now they have an I, and now all of a sudden their taxes are, are way up. So, I think sometimes, you know, sometimes things change, it doesn't influence it, but that's what you see on the piece of paper, and so that's where you kind of go from. So, I'm glad he was able to do that and reach out to the business owners, and the business owners actually had their own forum to get that information, because now maybe they'll let them inside the building, you know, and, and actually understand that, that's probably a good thing, because I know, from what I heard, quite a few of them had adjustments, you know what I mean, because of it. So I, I actually think it was a very positive thing that happened as an outcome.
Well, and I would also really congratulate Rick Mastel for pulling everybody together and providing that forum, I mean, that was really, shows a lot of leadership on his part, and that he was looking for solutions and not just, you know, so that, I, I really appreciate him doing that, and also allowing us to come so we could, we could learn too.
Yeah, I did wanna mention one other thing, I just, I found this, they passed out a thing that shows every city in Anoka County and what their percent of change was this year. And there was five cities that were 50% change, that, that were high, ours was 56%, but East Bethel was 55, Andover was 56, Ramsey was 61. So, it wasn't just Columbus that had a change, and I think, you know, that kind of showed them too, that it's, it's not just a Columbus thing, it's a, um, industry kind of wide thing.
But then will that go down when they do the physical?
It could, so each, well, this represents the percent of change that they went up, so like-
Commercial only?
Commercial, yep, just commercial. So if his, like, one business owner, theirs went up 50%, or, I mean, some was higher than that, some was not as high, but the average change for businesses in Andover was 56%, so theirs also went up pretty high.
Well, it's good they showed it, we're not telling you.
Yeah, yep. So, that was all.
Thank you, Sue. Janet?
Um, just a couple quick things, I was at the Lyons Pancake Breakfast, so was Ron, I'm gonna pass this down, because this is the first time I've ever known them to have Santa Claus there, and they did have Santa Claus there, and the kids were in, in good attendance, and they were giving away little bags of treats and stuffed animals, and so I have to say, the Lyons did a really great job of bringing that to the community on top of the usual fair at their, at their breakfast, so that was, that was pretty cool. They also, I also just brought, because I think I might be the only one that gets the Forest Lake Times here, but they did a really nice article on our levy, and so, and they got, they had a, a fair amount on there about our discussion of fiscal disparities and things like that, and Natalie was kind enough to let me read it ahead of time, so I got to fix some errors in it, which isn't very usual, but, so that part was, that part was good too. And then I, I don't really have anything else other than that, other than just-
I have nothing, except the accident, and it's been covered, and the meeting, that's been covered, and the newspaper, that's been covered. So, let's move on to no court enforcement, Jim, anything from Public Works?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Connor, Public Communications Coordinator, report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, my update is only a reminder to just continue brainstorming ideas about Council Corner, and I've gotten some, a couple of feedbacks for Planning Commissions, two different ideas that we'll also throw at you guys at the workshop in two weeks, so, yeah, good ideas coming already, so keep at it.
Uh, City Administrator, Elizabeth?
I have one item on the agenda tonight, and it's the time for the Local Board of Appeal and Equalization, for us to establish two dates, they, they ask us for two different dates, and then they give us a final date, once everyone has submitted their dates. I, if you have looked at the email, I do not know anyone named Angie, I don't know why they sent it to Angie, but if you look at your Agenda Packet on 64, on page 64, I think they sent it to Ohio, because maybe Angie works in Ohio, but I still have to ask them why they sent it there. So, anyway, the dates, the choices must fall between Monday, April 1st, and Friday, May 31st. I will have an opportunity to check, but I, I do believe all of you have gone through the training program, so that training is good for three years, so-
Oh, good.
I don't think we have anyone that needs to go for training this year.
I guess I didn't, what were the dates, so we get to pick a date?
You, you have to pick two dates, and those dates have to fall between Monday, April 1st, 2024, and May 31st. We generally have not done it on a council meeting night, you didn't mean on a Wednesday, we've done it on an alternative night, and I think after last year, I think it's important that maybe you do, because I, that meeting was two hours or two and a half hours, and I don't know that we could have put, done that during a council meeting.
No, that's too drawn out. So first of all, what day of the week is best for everyone? Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday?
Tuesday or Thursday for me.
Anybody else?
Same here.
Hmm?
Thursdays are typically good, and Tuesdays are fine, except when we have our workshops, so.
So just can't be on a workshop day?
Well, but there's a lot of other committee meetings that happen on a Tuesday too, Park Board's meeting on Tuesdays now, and so you just have to work around all the other... So Thursday might be an easier bet, just because I don't think there's anything, other than, you know, a few times a year, there's a sunrise meeting on a Thursday, otherwise I don't think there's anything that goes on on a Thursday, city-wise.
All right. Anybody? I'd say do it sooner than later. The first three weeks of April.
Although, if you, when do the statements come out?
You know, generally, it's the latter end of March that they come out.
Because if you wait a little longer, some people may be resolved before we get to the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Let's see. Make sure my birthday's not on a Thursday.
And generally, we would advise keeping it out of those last weeks of May, in case you have to continue the meeting for some reason, that you do have the authority to do so, if you have to come back for a secondary meeting for an inspection or something like that, so.
I think last year, you picked, last week in April, I think we, I think we were, I think we were somewhere in there.
It was April 18th, which would be the third Tuesday, and that's what you did in 2023.
And that is also a Thursday this year, so that works for me.
Excuse me, Tuesday, sorry, 18th was a Tuesday, my apologies.
Okay, well, the 18th is now a Thursday, and that would work for me.
Yep, or the 25th, I mean, there's nothing at the end of April.
Yeah, do the April 25th.
There's no weekends of, well, I guess a weekend wouldn't matter, if it was like opening fishing or something.
That's in May, so.
All right, 18th through 25th, anybody?
Well, you're gonna give two dates, so you could either do either of those, do-
Oh, the, the county said that it cannot be, they cannot be April 25th.
It cannot be the 25th?
Yep, that's the only exception.
You could do 11th or the 18th.
Why is that?
Scheduled system outage.
Yeah, I, yeah, that-
Or we could do the Tuesday and, Tuesday and Thursday of that week, like the 16th or the 18th.
16th is a Park Board meeting.
Oh, okay. Or the 25th, 18th or 25th?
25th is open, as is the-
Oh, no, the 25th.
Oh, excuse me, 25th is just got, so, but the 18th is open.
Okay.
So the 18th or the 23rd, unless it's-
Or the 23rd, yeah.
23rd is also available.
I'm fine for either one.
I might not be available on the 23rd, I might have company that, I may not be available on the 23rd, I may have out-of-town company that, that day, so.
How about the 18th, everybody?
18th is good.
Okay.
Okay, we gotta give them one more date, how about May 2nd? Or April 30th, Tuesday?
Both, those are good.
I could do it on the 30th.
You can? All right, so, we've got Thursday, the 18th, or Tuesday, the 30th.
And what time does it usually start, does it start at 6:00?
6 o'clock.
Okay.
And how long do we know which they choose, usually?
Usually it's a couple of weeks, they, the deadline to submit the dates was January 2nd, which is quite early this year, so maybe they wanna get the dates out sooner.
Yeah. All right. Anything else, Elizabeth?
Um, just a, a-
Motion?
Motion.
So I'll make the motion to submit the LBAE meeting date, the first choice of April 18th on a Thursday, and the second choice of April 30th, which is a Tuesday, to Anoka County. Is there a second?
This is Janet, I second.
I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Jesse, aye. Anything else?
I have nothing further.
All right. Uh, announcements, reminders, the Planning Commission for next Wednesday is canceled, and the council workshop on January 9th is at 5:30, EDA is on January 10th at 5:00, and the next city council meeting is January 10th at 6:00. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Uh, is, I know it's canceled, but Rob's taken over as the liaison?
Correct. Yes, yes, that was my last one, so he should be the liaison. And if for some reason he can't make it, I will, I'll be here, I can take notes.
Thank you.
I'll volunteer.
Thank you.
Although your notes are better than mine, Sue. Plus they're taped.
I'll make a motion there, Jerry.
All right.
Second.
I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
And Jesse, aye.